The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Has the meeting been advertised according to the Public Defending Act?
Yes, it has. Mr. Bauckham?
Roll call.
Mr. Bauckham? Here. Mr. Bishada?
Here.
Mr. Syak?
Here.
Mrs. Pinto?
Here.
Mrs. Estradino?
Here.
Mr. McEnon?
Present.
Mrs. Vicuña?
Here.
Mrs. Pratt?
Here.
Mrs. Bauckham?
Here.
Dr. Alfano?
Yes, Dr. Alfano. Good evening, everybody. This is the last segment of the three parts that we talked about in student achievement. Rather than me trying to explain the first two sections, which are only about seven minutes, I'm just going to let the video run through. There is some handouts here in regard to student achievement. But Segment One basically dealt with what student growth is and basically that we can monitor students of similar backgrounds and similar academic backgrounds and way then with what is called the Student Growth Percentile Model. The second part dealt with basically what student growth is, individual student percentile, and how you basically calculate it out. The final, which we'll eventually get to, is basically on the aggregated model, which basically means they will start to, through a medium type of situation, they'll try to compare different classes, different schools, and determine a student percentile, a median student percentile growth number. So without further ado, I'm going to put the video on, I'll let it run through, and the segment that you really need to look at is when it gets to the third segment, which talks about the aggregate part. The first two you've already seen, that should take about seven minutes, the last part is about three minutes.
Welcome to the Using Student Growth Percentiles video. This video is part of the NJAS smart educational series for New Jersey educators and serves to complement the instructor-led course, Using Student Growth Percentiles. During this video, you will learn a new way to understand your student performance by using student growth percentile. You will learn how student growth percentiles are calculated for individuals and groups, and how the concept of academic peers relates to growth percentiles. You will also learn how to interpret student growth percentiles for both individuals and groups. NJASK is a criterion-referenced assessment that tells us whether a student has demonstrated proficiency in a given subject's grade level content standards. The student scale score gives us information about how far from her relative position to the bar, either above or below the cut score for proficiency on those standards. Student growth percentiles, or SGP's, enable us to understand student performance in a new way by comparing a student's achievement change from one year to the next with that of his academic peers throughout New Jersey. In essence, student growth percentiles tell us whether a student grew faster or slower than other students in the state who share his or her NJASK test score history. The addition of growth percentiles allows us to redefine student performance, opening up new avenues of investigation into what works for New Jersey students. With student growth percentiles, performance equals achievement plus growth. A student growth percentile is calculated by comparing the student's achievement to that of his or her academic peers. Academic peers are students throughout the state of New Jersey with similar NJASK test score histories. The growth model does not take into account any demographic factors such as gender or ethnicity, or specific programs like those for English language learners or students with disabilities when identifying students as academic peers. Students are selected solely on their achievement of the NJASK tests. What's an academic peers have in common is simply that they are in the same grade, they have taken the same NJASK tests, and they have achieved similar results in their past tests. A percentile is a number from 1 to 99.
This is the second part, explains how.
But any student with a percentile reference group of mean scores equal to or less than a given individual's score. In New Jersey, the reference group is the student's academic peers. The student growth percentile, or SGP, describes the student's position on the percentile scale of 1 to 99 by comparing their scale score to the scale scores of their academic peers. In this example, the curve represents the distribution of scaled scores of the reference group. The 75th percentile line indicates the place in the distribution where 75% of the students have scaled scores at or below that point. Let's take a look at an example. Maria is a sixth-grade student who has scored at the proficient level on the NJASK Language Arts literacy test for the last three years. Maria scored 205 on the LAL test in grade four, 200 in grade five, and 207 in grade six. These scaled scores tell us that Maria has maintained proficiency from year to year, but that's all we can tell from this information. As mentioned earlier, the growth model calculates Maria's SGP by comparing her grade six scale score with the scaled scores earned by her academic peers, those who also scored at about 205 in grade four and 200 in grade five. The use of academic peers allows us to compare Maria's change in performance from one grade to the next against students like her. This comparison is fair because we're looking at how similar students change in order to understand what typical growth is for a group of students. At the same time, this allows us to find students who seem to be growing faster or making more progress each year, as well as students who seem to be growing more slowly or making less progress. This view of student performance provides us with new ways to investigate what is and what isn't working for students. So let's find out how Maria did compared to her academic peers. The 2009 and 2010 scale scores earned by all the students on a given NJASK test can be plotted to construct a distribution of scores as represented here. The axis on the left-hand side of the graph represents prior test score history, while the axis on the right will give us a distribution of 2010 scale scores. For each student, .4 by the intersection of his prior test score history and 2010 scale score values determines his place in the distribution. This is the pool of students for which Maria's academic peers will be selected. The slide taken at 200 on the 2009 scale score axis defines Maria's academic peers. When we looked at the distribution of Maria's academic peers, we conceived in the graphic that in 2010, they had scaled scores ranging from partially proficient, below 200, to advanced proficient, 250 and above, with the majority of scores falling in the proficient range or between 200 and 250. The 50th percentile of this distribution is a scaled score of 220. Let's look at where Maria's achievement fell in that distribution of scores. This diagram provides another way to look at Maria's test scores for grades four through six and the distribution of scores earned by her academic peers on the 2010 grade six LAL test. The question is, how did Maria's grade scale score compare with those of her academic peers? As we've seen, Maria's academic peers were in a wide range of scores in grade six. We can see here that some achieved scale scores as high as 275, well into the advanced proficient range, and some actually dropped to the partially proficient range by earning a scale score as low as 175. So how does Maria's score compare? Maria's 2010 grade six scale score of 207 is in the lower half of the distribution of the scores earned in 2010 by her academic peers. 57% of Maria's academic peers scored higher, and 43% of her academic peers earned scores equal to or lower than she did. Maria's student growth percentile is 43 because she scored equal to or higher than 43% of the students who made up her academic peer group. We've determined that Maria's SGP is 43. The question now is, how do we interpret that number? The student growth percentile is simply a number from 1 to 99, with higher being better. There are no absolute definitions or criteria that tell us definitively how much growth is high, below. The New Jersey Department of Education recommends that typical growth should be considered to be between the 35th and 65th percentiles. Therefore, Maria's growth is in the growth range considered typical. When we consider Maria's student growth percentile in combination with her scale score of 207, we can see that she is at the low end of the proficient range, and she is growing at a rate slower than the majority of her academic peers. This suggests, while she scored proficient on the LAL assessment, Maria might still benefit from literacy interventions that would support her growth and achievement. Up to this point, we've been talking about how we calculate...
This is where we left off. As you can see, it just gets to, it just gets to, you didn't shut it off altogether. We're going to go with the aggregate now. Now it basically takes those scores, and this is where they start to look at them per class, by school, by district, and so on and so forth. So basically what it's doing now is it's comparing apples to apples. It's taking a group of children that scored a certain percentile on the NJASK, they give them a student growth percentile, which is anywhere from 1 to 99, so it doesn't matter what you score, you go into a certain classification, and then they determine the following year, whether you went up or down. That's why they call it a growth model. This last section now basically will determine, from a school or a district perspective, what do you do with those scores to track, in the classroom to track, and in school to track, and in the district. So this is the final, let me say, the aggregate SGP.
Up to this point, we've been talking about how we calculate growth for individual students. It's also important to determine the growth for groups of students, like schools or grade levels. The most appropriate measure for reporting growth for a group of students is the median student growth percentile. This is the middle SGP score if one ranks the individual student growth percentiles from highest to lowest, or the average of the two middle scores in the distribution within even number of scores. Statewide, students of all types make up this distribution and have scores that extend the full range of the SGP scale. Therefore, the median student growth percentile for all the state's students on any test is always 50, with 50% of the students above the median and 50% of the students below it. Because of the very large number of students in the state, this median is a stable metric by which comparisons can be made. Let's take a look at another example. Imagine that this is a list of students in Maria's sixth-grade class. If we sort these students from lowest to highest SGP, we see a wide range of SGP scores from as low as 6 to as high as 95. There are 21 students in this group, and the middle student is Jeff Lynn. Her score is at the point where 50% of the students have a higher SGP and 50% of a lower SGP. This makes the median student growth percentile for this group of students 55. In this case, we had an odd number of scores, so it was easy to determine the middle number. If there were an even number of scores, we would average the two middle scores to determine the median SGP. To interpret our class median SGP of 55, we need to again understand that number in the context of the rest of the state. Typical growth is represented by an SGP that falls between 35 and 65. Students or groups outside this range have higher or lower than typical growth. Our class's median SGP of 55 falls within the typical range and a little bit above the statewide median SGP of 50. This is good news. Our kids seem to be doing as well as or slightly better than their academic peers throughout New Jersey. But there are other questions we should ask. How does this year's median SGP for grade six in our school compare to the median SGP for grade six classes in other district schools? Is the median consistent from year to year? How does the sixth grade's median SGP compare to the median SGP of other grades in my school or district?
You see what they're doing now is, and this is, and this is pretty much the end of the presentation. What they're going to start looking at now is through the NJASK, through language odds and math, and then if science comes in, they're going to start tracking how students grow on these particular tests, and they're going to obviously create a huge database, the Department of Education, and they're going to start rating district schools, et cetera, based on how well they do on these tests. So if you don't think that this is important, it's extremely important, and they're going strictly to a growth model. And the other problem that we face is that this model only takes into consideration students that are taking the NJASK from grades three through eight. Problem is, we also have students in grades K-1 and 2, we have students in various other subjects, so how do we track those individuals to just determine whether or not they're moving forward and whether or not they're obtaining the information and grasping the information that we're presenting, whether it be in, you know, social studies, whether it be in the specials or whatever. And that's a huge question that the State Department has not really answered. So are we going to be rating schools based on the NJASK? We're going to be rating schools based on the HESPA scores, based on growth model? We can't really do it with HESPA because there is no growth model, there is no test before, and there is no test after. So right now, we're looking into creating some sort of what we call district achievement tests that would create that growth model, but that's going to be a couple of years down the road. We're first trying to learn this student growth model, percentile model, because right now the state is, if you know, part of the evaluation system is going to be based on some sort of a growth model. So this is the last segment of what we put through. Once again, if you have any questions, I certainly will answer them, but I thought it would be better if we went through the whole segment because the last segment was only two or three minutes. But the last segment really is what it's all about for teachers. The last segment is going to take those scores, aggregate them, and then they're going to make parallels based on how well your class is doing, how well your district is doing, how well your school is doing, and unfortunately, we'll start to make comparisons. And that's just the way it's going to happen, and accountability is at that level right now for teachers and administrators in the state of New Jersey, really around the country. And we have a whole new corporate curriculum that's coming out, and I got a feeling things are going to get even tighter as we go down the pipe in years to come. Any questions from anyone? With none, thank you very much.
Dr. Alfano, what would be the next step for the May meeting? Because I think this begins to take on more of a, I guess, a relevant role as we start to relate it back to CEREBAL, whether it be through looking at our own results or looking at perhaps the input side of the equation and some of the classroom walkthrough information at a high level of Mr. Agiles.
I think that's what we're going to be looking at in May and possibly June, is the input. This is the output. You're getting the output, and I'm glad you mentioned that. There's an input and output. And obviously, Mr. Agiles and Ms. Eichner have been working very hard on the input to give you an idea of what we do, we get the certain results that we need to get. But I think that won't be till the middle of May, I think May 1st will be our first meeting after reorganization, so I want to keep that relatively clean because that's a pretty hefty meeting. And then the May 15th meeting, we'll do something, and probably the first meeting in June, because you know what the last meeting in June is like.
Yes.
It'll be about 150 pages worth of consent agenda.
Okay. Good work, thank you.
Student Council report?
Right now, we have a couple things going on. First is the pennyworth fundraising, which is still going strong. Then we have the Say No to Drugs, which is coming up soon, which is basically a program where you visit all the elementary schools and talk about the dangers of drug use and other unsafe behaviors. Next, our annual Student Council conference is going to be held at Six Flags on May 10. And we will also be holding Activities Fair at the Middle School for all the rising freshmen, allowing them to get a glimpse into all the organizations and clubs we have here in that school.
Thank you. Does anyone want to give a quick report?
Nothing.
Nothing?
Oh, it was great last night. Last night we did the budget, the budget presentation, the final one, right?
Yes, final one.
And since we're off next week and then the election day, and we had candidates tonight, and we did well.
Yes.
We survived.
And I'd just like to thank the old-school PTO for sponsoring the candidates night in order to take some work to put together.
District highlights, Mr. Pinto?
The Odyssey of the Mine Liberty Regional Tournament was held at the Sabal War Memorial High School on Saturday, March 17. Two of the high school teams qualified for the New Jersey Odyssey of the Mine State Tournament in April. They were O-Motional Vehicle team and Weird Science team. Ms. McCabe, who is the coach of both teams, was also presented with an outstanding Homer Award after being nominated by her students for her dedication and commitment to her teams. The members of the teams are Problem One, O-Motional Vehicle, Paul Katowski, Sweeta Jinka, Selby Disarno, Darcio Patel, Catherine Wolf, Padma Galat; Problem Two, Weird Science, Erica Donahue, Ariana Perschner, Apab Kakar, Hazma Ghah, Saad Seeth, Udi Modi. In addition to the high school students, the Sabal War Middle School Odyssey of the Mine students were also in attendance and part of the winning teams. The two middle school teams that will be competing at the state level are as follows: O-Motional Vehicle, Eric Kam, Ali Khan, Brian Egg, Nick Bear; To Be or Not To Be, Brendan Squateri, Bianca Trinidad, Kyle Kalakowski, Migla Zerptul, Tyler Gates, Andrew Florio, and Atul Petrapala. On March 15th and March 16th, the Sabal War Memorial High School Future Business Leaders of America students participated in the FBLA New Jersey State Conference in East Front West. The following state awards and recognitions were earned by our students. Silver Key Chapter Award was awarded to the Sabal War Memorial High School FBLA. The Gold Officer Award, a pre-cheek. Gold Member Award, deep cheek. Caitlin Klosik, Principals and Procedures, third place. Shivam Patel, Health Desk, fourth place. Jawad Shah, Technology Concepts, fourth place. Pris Kam, Public Speaking, two, seventh place. The following Sabal War Memorial High School educators were nominated by their peers and are the recipients of the February Kudos to You Awards for going above and beyond their normal responsibilities for students and staff. They are Rossel Alvez, Jackie Casanova, Gordon Inverno, Erica Kennedy, Lori Klobos, Mary Crew, Jamal Maroon, Carolyn O'Connor, Chris Howard, Joe Paspa, Kathy Riley, and Michelle Sartori. In early March, Sabal War Memorial High School's robotics class, led by teacher Mr. Peter Alvarez, held the first annual robotic demolition derby. The tournament, consisting of eight qualifying teams, was held during the day with the championship round held after school. Team Thrashers was the school-wide champs. Team members Robert Frank, Tom Rinaldi, and Mohamed Najjar worked together with great chemistry and intensity to pull off the upset victory. Robert was named MVP of the tournament. Congratulations to all those who competed in the extraordinary event. Wilson Elementary School continues to be a small school with a big heart, as is evident from the contributions they have made to charities that have focused on helping ill children. Over $1,520 was raised for Jump Road for Heart. A great thank you to Mr. Fisher, who orchestrated the activity. Students involved in the St. Jude Marathon collected over $2,000. Much thanks to Mrs. Amy Stubber, who is responsible for running this event. Our Pennies for Patients campaign collected $2,300 for seriously ill children. Congratulations to Mrs. Joy Paloff, the school nurse, for taking the lead on this event. That concludes this monster. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Beck. Building the ground, we have two uses of the high school, one for the zumba fundraising and a basketball camp. Any questions for which section? With none, moving to finance. Our bill list is as listed, number one. Number three is the borough is leasing a piece of property behind Truman School that we've been talking about for probably the last few months, and that's coming to fruition right now.
Dr. Alfano, just so the board is clear, this does not finalize it until we receive the approval from the Department.
Thank you, Mr. DeAndrea. Four is my spring conference. Five is the Race to the Top application. We received in $48,506. Ms. Eichner, we got us an extra eight grand, I believe we were originally set for about $40,000, and we got into the pool and they gave us another $8,000 because some district decided not to do it, so we basically took their money. Bigfoot Transportation is listed as such. Ms. Eichner's conference is also listed there. There is a change on number eight on page four. As listed, it's $2.148 million, and then as it says, as the lowest responsible bidder for the bids opened on March 27, 2012, it should also read for the middle school roof replacement, so everybody knows what that's for. So that's $2.1 million plus million dollars to do the roof repair with Safeway contracting. Number nine is the actual moving of the money, $1.2 million, as stated. Number 10 is an IDEA consolidated grant. I want to thank Ms. Duffy, it's almost $1.5 million in federal money that we received. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to Section C, personnel, non-certified and unpaid personal leave. These are the custodian salaries, and I want to thank the committee for working very hard and getting this contract completed. Number three, these are some new hires. Number four is this new substitute list. Any questions with that section?
Dr. Alfano, before you move on, just on finance, two questions. Could either you or Macheteak just summarize the types of programs that we're going to pursue?
I'll tell you why.
Could you? I didn't finish the question.
I'm a little late.
Could either you or Macheteak please summarize the types of programs that we're going to utilize the Race to the Top Phase III funds for, and also could Mr. DeAndrea just walk us through the free balance summary in preparation for the transfer?
No problem.
Thank you.
For the Race to the Top Fund, this money's spread out over four years. We will be expending most of it in the first year, and the majority of the funds will be used for the new evaluation system. We're going to be doing a lot of professional development, both for the administrators and for teachers. The first part of it, we're using the Danielson model, which is one of the four models that the state is allowing districts to use, so we're going to be involved with TeachScape, and we're going to be training, giving the training this summer for administrators. And even though we've been using Danielson, we still feel we need more training on that, and then we're going to be giving information out to the teachers, videos of model lessons, and so on. And the other part of the funds is going to be spent on the new Common Core state standards so that we can do professional development and curriculum for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. DeAndrea?
I sent an email today to all the board members. I also have handouts inside as to the surplus calculation. What I'd like to do is try to summarize as quickly and easily as I can. What I've tried to do for the board is, obviously, you're expending $2.1 million on a roof replacement, and questions have been raised, well, where is the funds coming from? Because we've been using capital funds for other things. I want the board to understand... I want the board to understand that the big part of what we're doing is 1.2 million dollars in capital reserve, so that's going to cover a large portion of it. Uh, we still have a little over $500,000 left over in the current capital budget that we had available. That's on page, and I apologize because it came out in three pages, but this is no real. So we have $565,000 left from current capital out night. And basically, the purpose of preparing this spreadsheet was to show where I believe we'll end up at the end of the year as returning the surplus amount that we put into next year's budget. We anticipated putting 2.8. My projection right now is showing 2.7. But it gets the middle school roof complete in total, and just so it's clear, except for the blue room that you did back in 2002, that one area. This completes the whole roof. Every aspect of the roof is now completed. Few things came in at $16.75 a square foot, way below our estimates that the architects had. So that was a big plus. We have a contractor who has already worked in the district Safeway. Uh, they did phase one and phase two of all of it, which went quite smoothly, on time, on budget, with no real issues. We have the manufacturer of the roof, of the roofing material that we're using, who came to the bid opening, who spoke highly of Safeway and the, and the mechanism in which they perform their jobs using their product. So everything fell in line for that, so I want the board to understand, we feel comfortable in that regard. This projection is based on the information I had available at last weekend. People, why can't, some ask, well, why isn't certain? And I'll give you a perfect example, that I calculated tuition for the rest of the year. I received an email today from the State Department indicating that, lo and behold, there's another kid that's a state responsible kid. Please send me the paperwork to retroactively pay you back to November. Those are the tough things that I deal with in trying to forecast. There's, it's really hard to determine exactly where certain things are going to fall. And the biggest one that I deal with is salaries. When you try to project where your substitute salary is going to fall, it's no real science to it, because April, May, and June tend to be larger months. But if the weather isn't bad, people don't necessarily take their personal days. So there's a lot of variables that go into it. Utilities are tough, but I feel comfortable that the number I'm using will get us to where we need to be to return the money for surplus next year. But the most important part, we get the middle school roof done, and that's just one less capital project we have on our plate as we continue to move forward. Next year, with the budget, when it passes, we get the Eisenhower roof done. That's one more roof, and we keep moving in that direction and that way.
Just so I, I understand where we end up with this. Uh, we've currently got the 1.2 million in capital, yeah, in the capital, uh, capital fund. That will be depleted at the end of this year, correct?
depleted, yes.
There's nothing in the budget to refund that at this point, right?
At this point in time, no.
What will be our estimated total surplus when we're done with this year, based upon your 2.7 million generation?
Will probably be, at, after returning the, if you're returning the 2.8 for next year, we'll probably be down around 1.2 million dollars is my rough estimate.
So about 1.3%?
Below the 2%.
Below the 2%, 2%.
And, and we've been there, I mean, last year, we were below there, we continue. But, and again, I think the most important thing is you've got real good numbers, a real good contractor, a manufacturer that likes a contractor, an architect that likes the contractor. And he's proven that he does good work. And I know Dennis was more than happy when he saw the numbers come in. And at $16.75 a square foot, uh, pretty damn good.
No, I, I agree, this is the way to go. We have to keep in mind that next year, we're not going to have a 1.2 million in, uh, for the capital fund.
Right.
Unless we generate additional savings beyond what you're estimating here.
And, and those things are possible. My good friend next to me has an extraordinary aid application sitting out there waiting for approval, that if I were to use her numbers, this spreadsheet would look phenomenal. I didn't go that crazy. Hopefully, we get her money, and then, yes, we'll talk about putting some maybe funds aside for capital reserve. But I, I'm not going to say that until we see those monies come in.
Okay.
And as usual, it'll probably come in to the budget.
Usually, yes.
I have a question. So the, the blue room, roof, that's, that's fine, it doesn't mean...
It's only 10 years old.
Right, so it's fine?
Yes. 10 years old, we've had no...
And all, all work will be done over the summer?
Right now, uh, I wouldn't want to be in that middle school with D-Wing, Univents, patio replacement and roof replacement. Mr. Pat Leon is going to be very busy this, this summer up there.
But he's the man for the job.
He's up to task, I'll speak for him.
Okay, moving back to section C, any questions with section C? With none, moving to D, Personnel Certified. I would like to comment and congratulate Anna Gretzer, and especially Lucy Bloom, who I worked side by side for about four years, and we're going to miss Lucy, and especially Georgia Bannan. She's put 50 years into this school district. So I think that in itself speaks volumes, and Ms. Georgia, and she really was a very good friend and mentor, and she taught me a lot. So I wish all three Godspeed and a very healthy and happy retirement. Moving along, resignation, I have a resignation. I have an unpaid, um, child rearing leave, a medical leave, a few medical leaves, a pregnancy leave, another child rearing leave, um, a bunch of professional days, which are on pages nine and 10. Some retirement payments that are listed as such on page 11. These are the advisors and coaches that are being approved for tonight. There are some vacant categories, which we will, um, leave open until we do replace those individuals or those positions. Moving along to page 15, um, this is, um, a few, uh, this is one of employment that we have to make, one position we have to fill. And finally, on page 16, these are a list of new substitutes. Any questions on section D?
I have a question.
Sure.
How can we approve substitutes that are already employed by the district? If they're under contract to work until the end of June, if they don't retire till July 1st, why are we approving them?
I guess Lucy's taking a quick jump on it. What this means is, and that's a good question, it's a good question. Because all this is saying is, we can then report them to the state. They get their paperwork in, and then we put them on a list to actually work. We...
But they're employed full-time.
I, I understand that, but we still have to get some paperwork to the State Department. Is that correct? Because I know she's talking about Lucy Bloom and, and Ben Zinty.
Yes.
But Ben is retiring as of May, May 1st, so I don't...
That's different.
That's what we have.
They have to go on to this list.
Believe it or not.
And you see here, it says for the 11, 12, and 12, 13.
Right. So we're pushing it to the next year.
We're pushing it ahead.
Thank you.
Just, just, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Just to get the paperwork started.
There's a lot of paperwork, believe it or not, even if you are a teacher, the State Department still wants paperwork, and we still have to go through the process of putting them on the surplus, believe it or not.
And what, just having the name in the board before does not mean that they're able to substitute yet, okay?
Well, we've learned that the hard way.
It's one of the steps in the process of getting them ready to be able to substitute, it's one of the big ones.
They haven't even retired, they want to sub. But that's the area, you know, there. Any other questions with section four, section D, I'm sorry?
Number nine, I have a couple of things on Ivan, Ivan Mavasky.
Okay. With none of the questions, E policy, we have five policies, starting on page 16, with Basic Technology, 61, 40 to 10. If you move to page 23, that's our technology acceptable, acceptable use agreement policy. R, actually, it's a regulation. On page 31, it's drugs outdoors, back on steroids. Again, these are all policies we've had in effect, which is making revisions to them, which are on the actual, um, document itself. Dating violence, I believe this is the first reading, 51, 38.8, that's on page 38, which we must have according to the new state rules. Dating violence at a school, this is the regulation to that policy, which is 51, 31.8, this is how we will regulate the policy. These are, these are, this is the first reading. Anybody who has any questions on those policies?
Not a question, but a comment. On page 20 of the, uh, which policy is that? The, uh, technology. Page 20, under Personal Technology, we need to add laptops to that first paragraph as person, uh, as devices that...
Living to laptops?
Yep.
Cell phones?
Um, I would like to thank the Policy Committee, Mr. Saya, who's the Chair of that committee. I know it's a lot of work, as you can see, there's a lot, um, as you can see, a lot of stuff is on the line and crossed out, so this is not an easy situation if you flip the floor. But this is the first reading. If board members do have questions other than tonight, you could certainly bring forth. We will probably not do a second reading until the May 1st meeting. We will do a during reorganization. So we have plenty of time to review the policies.
I have a question, the, the dating violence policy, I see it says mandated. Where's the line between, it says dating violence, but it specifically says in school. What, what exactly is a dating violence in school? Where's the line between what happens in school and it's out of school here?
We had a lot of discussion about this the other night in the conference call. It's pretty well laid out here for you, let me just try.
Yeah, the, uh, the, what we talked about is the, uh, the state reg, what's actually mandated, is that we address teen dating violence that occurs in school. And that we provide education and curriculum to students to deal, on how to deal with teen dating violence outside of school. There isn't any legal requirement or any mandated requirement that we have policy to address specifically what to do with teen dating violence that occurs out of school. And we did comment on the fact that we would think it would be odd that someone would take someone to school for a date. But nevertheless, uh, that's, that's the way the, uh, the reg is required by the state, that we address, that we address teen dating violence, which occurs in school, and educate students on the proper reporting, what's acceptable, what's not acceptable, on how to deal with a, um, a dating relationship outside of school.
And page 40 defines what at school meant, at the bottom of page 40.
Right, and then on the top of page 41, number three, talks about what they mean by dating violence.
Right, but if you looked on page 45, where it has the, the warning signs and the lists, and that means the school is responsible for making a determination when they look through these, if these people are dating, and then that becomes an act? Is that what I'm reading? Like, if you look at these, you're, you're saying extreme jealousy, maybe excuses. The staff is supposed to recognize these and then say, okay, these people are dating, and then it becomes?
No. This is, in a lot of ways, it's similar to the HIB policy, and incidents like this can fall under HIB, they can fall under dating violence, or they can fall, fall under just the Code of Student Conduct.
Right.
Okay, and they can fall under all three, or one or the other. And the staff is to be trained to, to notice, to recognize what some of these signs are. And it's to be part of our curriculum also, for the students to be aware of these issues among the signs on the...
Right, but I agree with you, like, you can look at this as in HIB, so this, this has to be coming somewhere. What is the focus of this particular as opposed to a HIB policy or a regular discipline policy?
That was our question, so...
It, it's mandated by the state.
Just like the HIB. These, this is just like harassment and intimidation and bullying policy.
So you have to determine which one of these involves...
Or several, it can be, it can be more than one. The primary difference with this is it does not impact anything, any acts that happen outside of school, it's just when it gets carried over into school. And we don't have, as of right now, the reporting requirements and quite as much as far as paperwork requirements that we do in HIB. We don't have, you know, the 10-day timeline and so on and so forth, but we do have to, you know, look at this. It's a whole separate category of incidents.
But if you look at this, it says name-calling and put-downs. Does one pupil in a relationship use name-calling? So if there's name-calling, in order for it to fall into this policy, these two people that are name-calling are dating, is that what we're...
Or it could be a HIB, you know how many times I get hit with that? So you read, if you read the HIBs, you can see, once he calls another kid of whatever, and we're right back into the old...
But, but if they're dating, it could be don't HIB, end dating.
Could be, it could be a double HIB. Pretty convoluted, but we have to do it, we have to put it in, and we're required to do it. Don't date. Any questions with that section? And again, we, we probably won't put this back up till May 1st, so you have plenty of time to review. Moving to section F, Curriculum. Speaker to Devil, harassment, intimidation, and bullying reports and findings, 137 through 144. And we have two, um, curricula that are being approved, math, uh, she, uh, math in grade two and algebra applications. Any questions with that section? With none, moving to co-curriculum. There's a volunteer coach there. There is a, a Sable, uh, Middle School Odyssey of the Mind hosts a potluck dinner on Friday. I was a little afraid of that, May 11th, potluck dinner, I'm not sure. I don't know what a potluck dinner is, but certainly, is that where everybody brings something?
Right, the students are bringing something.
I think I had that Friday night, that potluck dinner, but it didn't really work too well. And, uh, then we also have a, uh, the high school's doing a break course, uh, clubs, Volcan, which is a very noble course. Any questions with section J? With none, moving to support services, um, cancellation of transportation route. If you look at number three, there are 17 field trips. And, uh, someone is asking to use our buses on the date, on page 49, um, on April 21st. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Mrs. Esposito for three great years. I know she's decided not to run, and that's unfortunate for us, but I know she's got a lot of things that she wants to catch up on, and I, I really do appreciate, um, a board member is not an easy job, although you don't get paid, I call it a job. And, and it really does take a lot of time. So, Mrs. Esposito, good luck, and good health, God bless.
My pleasure, Agent Mike. I wanted to thank the residents for voting in and believing in me, it meant a lot to me, and I might be back.
All right, I'll hold the clock, Jen. So, uh, that concludes my report.
I have a question, on bus tri, on trips, if for number three, B and C, we have eight students going to Wilson School, so nine people going to Wilson School, and five people going to the UES. And there's a huge difference in price. Wilson School, like, it's just a few students going across town. I think the UES is even closer, but it's $64, and, like, why such a difference in price on the buses?
Media's launch. I can't answer that, I don't know. Would you know that?
Number three, B and C, like, those two in particular.
Not having the paperwork, I wouldn't be able to tell you.
You want to see what's what? B and C, $64, $65.
And the other is $81.
It may be, it may be the bus driver, which is the hourly rate is probably not higher.
That's probably, depending, that could be, because when you're looking at the cost, it's not the fuel, it's most likely the bus driver here, who took the assignment, is at a higher rate, at, at an hourly rate.
There's a big difference between your hourly rates. I think that's what you're looking at.
$17 could justify that.
Easily, easily, god willing. That concludes my report, ladies and gentlemen.
Any other questions on the agenda? If not, I'll open it up to the public, or any questions on agenda items only?
Over here, ladies. Are you going to sing?
Hi, Dan, hello. Hi, um, we're here on account of...
So do you check your name and address for the record?
Yes, um...
Yes, um, my name is Denise Galasso, Nineteen Orchid Court in Saro. Hi. We're here on behalf of Mrs. Pesci, and we hope that you will reconsider your decision on removing her, um, from coaching cheerleading. Uh, I'm not good at speaking, but as parents, we really love her, we think she's done a great job, and we really want her to remain as a coach. Uh, right now, we have two girls here who are going to speak, um, and they have a letter that they'd like to read to all of you, so we hope you reconsider. Thank you.
Hi, everyone, um, I'm Danielle Trina, and I'm one of the bomber cheerleading captains. Um, although this decision may not directly affect me, um, I believe this should show how strongly I feel about Miss Pesci's coaching abilities. Um, now I'm gonna read the letter that we wrote. To whom this may concern, recently, it has come to the attention of the bomber cheerleaders and parents that our coach, Miss Pesci, is not permitted to coach this upcoming season. We are all extremely upset with this and are asking you to reconsider your decision. Miss Pesci has been a cheerleading coach since her teenage years, coaching at Esteban Yome Jazz for four. Whether it was Pop Warner, All-Stars, or high school, Miss Pesci has brought her superb coaching abilities and lifted every team she's coached up to new levels. At Esteban Yome Jazz, along with Miss Mascherangelo, Miss Pesci was able to help the squad become a competition team. Before she became a coach, cheerleaders were only seen on the sidelines. Now we're able to show off our skills on the mat and be taken seriously as a sport. The general public really has no idea what our cheerleading team is like during competition season. We compete skills that bomber cheerleading has never seen in school history, and we compete against teams who you see on the ESPN. In these few short years, our team has excelled in so many ways, and we owe it to our experienced coaching. Miss Pesci knows our skills and strengths and weaknesses as a team and as individuals. She pushes us to be better cheerleaders and has taught us to always strive to do the best we can. She inspires us to live up to bomber standards and instills commitment and character into all of us. In fact, Miss Pesci was a bomber cheerleading captain herself. Miss Pesci is beyond dedicated. She and Miss Mascherangelo come to early morning practices, late practices, basketball games, and every football game, and every competition. A new coach may not be up to the, that demanding schedule. Even though that never-ending season of cheerleading may exhaust every cheerleader and coach, Miss Pesci still has a smile on her face at every practice and competition. We know that she loves the sport and every girl on the team. If we are having a tough practice, Miss Pesci knows how to keep us in check. She makes us feel better when we're discouraged and always tries to help us. Handling teenage girls is not always an easy task, but Miss Pesci does it with ease. If we are sad or down, she can make us laugh and remind us that we are here because we love the sport. Miss Pesci knows how to push the team in the right directions. Without her, we would have never been able to get fifth place out of fifteen teams in our state competition. Now I'm gonna pass it to Julie Gallagher to read the second half of our letter.
Hi, I'm Julie, I'm a junior on the cheerleading squad. Um, the second half of the letter, okay. Miss Pesci is a great mentor, she cares about her students' success as well as her cheerleader successes. She's always pushing us to reach our full potential and teaching us life lessons along the way. We've learned to never give up, have fun, and work hard in order to be successful. She taught us to make big goals and never settle for less. The best feeling in the world is seeing Miss Pesci sitting next to the judges table at competitions, screaming encouragement and dancing along with our music as we perform our routine. It gives us confidence and a positive attitude to keep going. You have to remember that a team is not just the players, but the coaches too. Losing a coach like Miss Pesci is like losing the most valuable player on the team. Mrs. Pesci is an expert in cheerleading, and we need her to continue our achievements. We are finally being recognized statewide as an accomplished team, and bomber cheerleading has made our high school career worthwhile. So the Saro War Memorial High School bomber cheerleading squad and parents are asking you to please take into account what Miss Pesci needs of this team. We hope you reconsider your decision about forbidding her from coaching this season. It would not be the same without her. Please don't damage our program that we've all worked so hard for. This means so much to the cheerleaders, parents, and fans. Thank you.
Does anyone else from the public wish to speak on anything on agenda items? If not, can I have a motion for the superintendent's report?
So move second.
Sorry, Lieutenant, the second. Mr. Valverde?
Yes, it's the Friday, I'm voting.
Mr. Bishara?
Yes.
Mr. Saya?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes, with the exception of number ten. Cheerleading, head varsity coach, Mrs. Mascherangelo.
Page eleven?
Page thirteen.
Voting no?
Voting no on the second.
Mr. Mackenham?
Yes, for no exception.
Mrs. Rukuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Strapp?
Yes.
And Mrs. Backer?
Yes, delegates to New Jersey School Board Association?
I'm also voting yes.
I vote yes, I follow.
But I'm voting yes.
Thank you.
Uh, delegates to New Jersey School Boards, I'll be sending home to the, uh, board members a copy of the resolutions, which will appear on the delegate assembly agenda, oh, I should turn to sign, it would probably help. I'll be sending home to the, uh, board members copies of the resolutions, which will appear on the delegate assembly agenda, uh, on May, I believe it's nineteenth. Uh, I will be needing direction at the, uh, May meeting from the board with regard to how you wish me to vote, assuming I'm going to still continue as the delegate. Uh, one of the items which actually is coming up is a recommendation to petition the legislature to reschedule the deadline for candidate petitions for the Board of Ed for those districts which have moved the school board election to November, because as it stands right now, candidates would need to file their petition by the June primary, which means that petitions would be due basically a full four months, five months, prior to the November election, whereas right now, under the current configuration, when the election is held in April, they're only due approximately six or seven weeks prior to the election. Uh, so they're looking to shorten that time frame to put it, and make it more consistent with the practice that has been, uh, in the past. Uh, there's three other resolutions on the agenda as well, um, I'll send a copy of those home, and you can let me know, uh, your feedback.
Thank you.
Thank you.
When is the vote? I just said-
Uh, it's the third Saturday of May.
Committee reports, Mr. Mackenham?
Yes, under the committee, uh, Curriculum Committee, uh, Mrs. Backer and I last weekend went to a, uh, a two-day seminar, uh, in Princeton, uh, which was paid with grant money, um, and the topic was the Iowa School Boards Foundation. Uh, it was called the Iowa Lighthouse Project Driving Student Achievement. In a nutshell, what this was about was in the state of Iowa, they looked at, um, districts that had high achieving students and then districts that did not have high achieving students, and they looked at those boards of education, and what they found out was that those districts where the students were high achieving, the board was very engaged in, in student achievement. We, we gained a lot of information from here, and I'm really excited about this. Um, we have a new Director of Curriculum Instruction, some very good ideas, and, um, after seven years on the board, I am just salivating to talk about education. I've, I've talked about baseball fields and dirt and left, left turn signs and all kinds of things, and I think this is why we exist as a board of education. And, uh, we've already started the wheels turning with an email I sent to, to Mr. Agus, we want to start looking at data from standardized test scores, and start to look at data points in that data, and, and see if there's any trends or anything that we need to focus on. So, uh, it was very worthwhile, and, and a compliment, uh, which I don't give much to New Jersey School Board, so this was a very well, I thought, uh, seminar, and, and every New Jersey School Board Association, the food is always really, really good, so it was, it was eye-opening, and I, um, I, it was worthwhile for me to get re-blued on, on what we should be doing on Board of Education.
And I'd like to really thank both of you for, uh, for going, I had a chance to see that program in action, uh, at a national conference a few years ago, and I recommended it, and, uh, I'm glad you found it very applicable, and I'm excited about your excitement.
And I'm excited about you being excited.
Now we sound like Tim Tebow.
Okay, let's move on. School calendar, Dr. Alfonso?
I did want to ask one other question, committees, when, when is our next Curriculum Committee meeting, Mr. Agus? Did we decide on the twenty-fourth?
April twenty-fourth.
It's gonna be the twenty-fourth?
Yes.
And that's prior to our meeting?
Correct.
And what time are we gonna do that? Five-thirty?
I believe it was five o'clock, if you can make it, if not, five-thirty.
Five-thirty gives me a little wiggle room. Um, okay, and then when is the redistricting committee meeting going to be?
Twenty-third.
The twenty-third?
Yeah, you harked up this one.
Yeah, I like going to be-
Well, yeah, curriculum already took the twenty-fourth.
So what time on the twenty-third?
Five-thirty.
We'd rather go four-thirty.
Where is the redistricting committee meeting? Do we decide on the-
Lower, it's easier.
Easy for you.
I make a motion, we have to go to high school.
I said I don't. Calendar?
Five o'clock?
Five-thirty.
The calendar, there's really, um, I think two, two issues came up from what we've had, Mr. Do you look at me like that for? They're right here. I got it on here.
I know what one of the issues are.
Um, we have, we have two issues, and, uh, the first issue is whether or not to add Veterans Day, which right now, I have it in the teachers convention, Veterans Day, because the students would also have Election Day, they would have the eighth and ninth, and they would also have Veterans Day, so the students would have sixth, eighth, ninth, twelve. If that's what we want, that's fine, I have no problem with that. I, I had mentioned to Dr. Alfonso, you know, um, my support of Veterans Day, obviously, to everybody here, um, if Veterans Day's gonna be recognized as Monday as a state holiday, the school district would have recognized that day, especially in this town. Um, and, you know, uh, I, I think Veterans Day is, to me, is, uh, one of our more important days, and I think we need to have that recognized. That's my opinion, but, you know, I'm interested in what the rest of the board thinks. I understand a member's a bad day because you have a bad month, you have the teacher comp, you have the Thanksgiving break, I understand.
Plus it does push us deep into the year.
Well, what I would recommend then, on, on the spring break, you know, you have that Friday, then a week, eliminate that Friday, substitute for Veterans.
You better get your feet washed on Thursday, buddy.
Oh, boy.
You know, you know, you know that Thursday's, you get your feet washed, so you gotta, you better go. But, yes, we understand, I, I know you're not looking down on a good Friday, and I understand what you're saying, if we do go before, that's the other, um, that's the other question of whether or not we go before Easter, or we go after Easter with the break. Right now, um, in the, in the calendar, it's after, but some people have said that Passover runs exactly before, into that following Monday. I believe the last day of Passover is the day after Easter next year. Monday, yeah, I think it's Monday, I'm, I'm almost certain, and I think the week before, it's like Tuesday and Wednesday of the week before, something like that.
Right, so if we had the week off before Easter?
If you have, the, the other problem with that is Easter is gonna be the earliest, then if you give the week before, it's March twenty-fifth, that would be your first day off to March twenty-ninth. Now, that's Good Friday, March twenty-ninth, so that would be incorporated within it. Now, Passover still runs to the following week, which is the day after, which is, I believe it's April first, and, and, you know, we're not gonna go to Tuesday. So, you're basically, if you go before, you go after, you're gonna hit Passover.
Right, but the-
But I don't know, one of the most holy days is Passover.
I don't know.
I don't know.
The beginning, the beginning of Passover is, I, I wish, I don't know if anybody from the audience would like to speak on that, but the beginning of Passover, I believe-
Well, Miss Debbie Diggins, that's a person, that, that, that really controls my life.
What, you just take twenty, twenty-fifth through twenty-ninth?
Well, we were trying to determine whether or not, if we take the twenty-third or the twenty-ninth, it, that, but the problem is, I think the following week is also Passover. So either way, I think either way, you're gonna hit Passover before or after.
Well, I'm not-
Or you're gonna miss the point of Passover, right? You may, on Good Friday?
I'd rather sit a week after, I'm, I'm listening to Christmas, after Easter.
After Easter.
Could, could we get back to the Veterans Day issue?
I, I support getting off on the twelfth for Veterans Day. Everybody's gonna be off, the parents are gonna be off, I, I think the parents would want their kids home that day.
Right, I think it's important.
I want to celebrate it, I mean, the, it's a federal holiday on the twelfth, on the Monday, like, we should have it off too.
Right, I agree that we should-
And I, I think it is an important day. I mean, last year, it just happened to fall, I think, on a Friday.
Can we take a poll of the board, make it very simple? On Veterans Day, let's do-
I'll do Veterans Day first.
All right, I'll start. I'd say that we have the Monday off to celebrate a Veterans Day.
Yes. Yes, yes, yes.
Veterans Day and Good Friday?
No, we're just doing-
Make it simple.
Veterans Day, yes?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, you've got direction on this one.
Okay, now.
Now let's do Good Fri-
Easter, Easter break.
Before or after?
The week before, the week out.
All right, I'll start on this one, again. I say that, and I'm a past graduate, it'll be forty-five years coming up, I can't wait to get out of school, and I know these students are gonna feel the same way at the end of June. The fifteenth is, and twelfth are great days to get out of school, you don't have to come back here. So I say we do the week before Easter, and then take care of it. That's my opinion.
Yeah, how does that, I'm not four before it too, but I, I'm kind of curious, like, how that affects-
We'll take the Monday for Passover, but then they still have their five days off.
Well, but, before we log, because there's always, just from my opinion, if we go, and I know we discussed this a few years ago, if we go the week before, we gave Easter Monday, and I think that's important, so if we go the week before-
It would be from March twenty-fifth to April first.
Which is a Sunday, though, right?
No, April first is the Monday.
So we would have the Monday off?
Correct.
If we do the week before, we still would have Easter Monday.
Yes.
Dr. Alfonso, June nineteenth, what day is that? Is that a Monday?
I think it's a Wednesday.
That's a Thursday.
That's a Thursday.
Yeah, so now you're pushing to Friday, and, or it's a Wed, is it a Wednesday?
No, I think it's a Wednesday.
It's a Wednesday.
Right, so then the twentieth and the twenty-first, you're into the last week.
Right, because Veterans Day begins last Friday.
So you get a couple of snow days, and we're going to June thirtieth.
Well, that would be like seven snow days.
Well, we've had four in one shot.
I have a question, what, how do the teachers feel about it? That's what I'm looking at.
Uh, the teachers want the week before.
They want the week before. Is that?
Well, we were asking. I was curious how the teachers felt about the week before or the week after? The week before.
Well, they want the week after. But she's saying the week after.
Who's saying the week after?
How about the parents? Well, and we could-
Well, we're paying to make this decision.
I was just curious, though, before I gave my opinion, how, how they felt.
They recommended the week before.
Yeah, I'd be fine with the week before.
We don't have to open up them.
Right. I like the week before.
I'd like the week after.
And, and I want to just, I, I want to make sure I'm clear, that I like the, the week before, because then, because that includes the, the, I don't know if I'm saying it properly, but the higher, holier days of Passover.
Right, right, but we're including Easter Monday?
Right.
In the week before.
Right.
I'm okay with the week before.
Me too.
Week before.
I'm okay with week before plus Easter Monday.
Week before plus Easter Monday.
You got some guidance.
Thank you.
Okay, so, and that's a wash-
Well, I have to add, now, I have to add, no, well, it's not-
On the calendar, except for-
November, November, you're losing a day in November, so you have to add it into November. I mean, add it into June.
You have to add a day-
So I have to add it, take a day off in November, and now the, the kids will be getting out on the twentieth, and the teachers will be getting out on the twenty-first.
I, I can, I'm sorry.
Not to confuse things, but I noticed Columbus Day is not here this year, does anybody have an objection to that? Since we went through this two years ago.
I just hope the guy from Italy doesn't vote.
You don't vote.
I, I would like-
Well, I won one battle, that's for sure.
I, I put a video on the phone, and that was it. Started talking Italian to each other.
I think you have to read the papers for Frank and his-
Hey, the guy's like, he sent me an article in Italian, I says, I don't read it.
The other question I have, December twenty-first, why do we have to have a half-day on December twenty-first? Do we normally, would that mean a half-day?
You know, it's a good question, I'm not sure if it's in, actually in the contract, I don't think it is. I think it's just been forever.
But we usually get out later, and that's early, the twenty-first, usually we give a half-day, because it's like, it's a day of Christmas Eve, it's like, close to Christmas close to Christmas Eve.
So we can have a Christmas party then.
Not a very good one.
What are you talking about? We don't.
If you had Monday as a half-day.
A month and fourteen dozen.
Twenty-second.
A month and fourteen.
Is the twenty-first a Friday?
Yes. Twenty-first is a Friday.
Yeah. Whatever you plug. I, I would say leave it as a little dispensary.
So you're going to have a party?
No, I think it'll be a, um, sort of a title, maybe if you pull that half-day before. I think I've tried it once before, it's sort of like Good Friday.
Right. And I assume these other three half-days are, we have to have those?
PLCs, those are PLC data samples, professional learning community data. Rather than taking full days, we take, the PLCs is what we use a lot of that time to do what we've just said, deviations, PLCs, things of that nature.
I'd like to, I'd like to also mention that regardless if we go, if we're off the week before or the week after Easter, it's still six days, because if we're off the week after Easter, then we will also be off that Good Friday. So it's the one plus five, as opposed to the five plus one.
It's a wash.
It's a wash.
That's it.
Okay.
Um, I have one more, if you don't mind.
One more change?
No, one more discuss, is that it for the calendar?
You're trying to, uh.
Um, I, I sent you out an email today on graduation dates, and people are asking. Um, I just would like to just make it public now that we have to approve it. I want to get it on the website. Um, the high school would go out June fifteenth, and the, the middle school would go out June fourteenth, since God willing, there's no snow, which I don't. All right, I would say let's do the two days that we actually have in the calendar, which is the fifteenth will be, um, for the high school and the fourteenth, June. Will be Friday, right. About six o'clock, I think that's still enough of time.
Sundown.
Yeah, just till sundown. Sundown's on till about eight-thirty that night, so we're in good shape for that. So, it, does anybody have an objection to that?
No.
No? Okay, then I'll put it on the website. Sandy will put it on the, I don't know if she's still here. But Sandy will put it on the website, and, um, I have it written down. Thank you.
Right, can I say something about the way that I voted for cheerleading, since I see that I have disappointed people here?
You may.
Okay. Just so you understand, a couple of weeks ago, I had cheerleaders here crying, okay, at the microphone.
You can't talk.
Okay, so, uh, well, then I won't go into that, I'm just letting you know, I'm not voting to be mean or to be vindictive, there was a specific reason for it. Okay, maybe not everyone's aware of all of it, but I'm getting dirty looks, and I'm just letting people know the reason that I voted. Okay, so, that's all. Does anybody else have anything else to discuss then?
Yeah. Just, after I open it up for the public, does the board wish to vote on the calendar tonight, otherwise we won't be able to do it until May first, is that?
If you do that, you might as well do it on both, do it on the graduation as well.
Oh, that requires a vote.
Yes, we always have it, we always have it in the agenda. Is that correct, Mister DeAndrea? Yes, we do.
I believe we do, yes.
We do vote on graduation.
So if you want, we can vote on both of them. You feel comfortable doing that, that's fine with me.
Otherwise, we have to push it out to May first.
Fuck, let's do it. That's fine.
So moved.
Take a vote.
Well, I'm going to open up for the public first, in case anybody has any comments. Okay, I'd like to open up to the public for comments on any topics. So if anybody has any comments on the calendar that we just discussed, graduation date or anything else, now's the time. Could you come to the microphone, please?
You gotta come up.
This way you can be heard.
Name and, name and serial number.
Oh, Mary Lord, dear you. Address twenty Little Broadway, terrible, New Jersey. Uh, just a question, uh, are we recognizing Jewish holidays, Rosh Hashanah?
Yes.
No, of course.
Yeah, good point, yes.
And we are, and we are having Good Friday off?
Yes, yes.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'm going to confession this week.
He'll be there a while.
Any other questions?
Is this just our calendar or?
No, this is for anything.
First of all, I'd like to compliment the board on Veterans Day. I think I've gone, I remember quite a few years back where we had veterans come here and really stress the, the mention of having Veterans Day off. So it is an important holiday, it's a federal holiday, and if we don't, I think we're teaching our children something, and it's very, very important, one of the days that is important, more so than Columbus Day, Mr. Mackenow.
I, I happen to be an Italian and a veteran, so I'm okay. I got both things covered.
Actually, it was Mister DeAndrea that was one o'clock.
Oh, okay, whatever, but I just think it's top, deserves top priority. Another thing, I want to commend the board for taking the surplus money and fixing the middle school group. Uh, coming to these Board of Ed meetings for quite a few years, and I just noticed the neglect of maintenance, of maintaining our assets, and it's very, very important to maintain them. I don't think it would be right to just throw it on the laps of the voters and say, okay, we need fifteen million because we neglected our schools. Taking the money from the surplus and, or using the surplus, rather, I think is very important. Um, another thing is, I attended the St. Patrick's Day Parade in South Amboy, and I was a little disappointed not to see the Sereval High School marching band there, and I was wondering if somebody could answer me and tell me, do we have a marching band and why weren't they there?
We have one, but they, I, nobody asked me. Usually if people want to use our band, they ask, like, for example, Memorial Day or whatever, they usually ask us, but we do have a band, so nobody.
So the St. Patrick's Committee, I saw representation from Old Bridge, two bands from Woodbridge, um, Carteret. There were so many high school contingencies, even the South Amboy Middle School Band, uh, with being represented in Sereval and remembering that Sereval was part of South Amboy way back. We were part of South Amboy, and here for our Sereval High School not to be part of that marching band, I mean, marching parade or festivities, that really bothered me.
I'll, I'll check, um, Mrs. Kilcombs, because this is the first I've heard of it out, and usually they come through my office, but maybe, I, I don't know, but I will check on.
Well, I know a few of the people from the Hiberian Society in South Amboy, I could also check too, why they neglected to even ask Sereval, so.
I had a few people stop me that day and ask about that as well, where was Sereval?
Where was Sereval, not represented. It was a big void, and it was very obvious. I mean, a lot of, I mean, our fire departments, everything else, but not our marching band. And we do have a marching band, don't we?
Yes, we do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who wishes to speak?
If not, a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
And the graduation dates. If I could, Mrs. Backo, I, I would recommend that you do each one separately. I'll make a motion to approve the calendar.
Well, talk about it. Could you just read the graduation dates and?
Sure, absolutely. Um, we'll do the graduation first.
Right.
That's, um, June fifteenth for the high school, and June fourteenth for the middle school. June fifteen, June fifteen for the high school, and June fourteenth for the middle school.
I make a motion.
Second.
We're voting on the graduation date of June fourteenth for the middle school and June fifteenth for the high school. Mr. Valter?
Yes.
Mr. Bishara?
Yes.
Mr. Saya?
Yes.
Mrs. DePinto?
Yes.
Mrs. Esposito?
Yes.
Mr. Mackenow?
Yes.
Mrs. Rukuya?
Yes.
Mrs. Trapp?
Yes.